Good evening. Welcome to the city council meeting for the, I'm looking at 21st of August. Nice big crowd. Hope you enjoyed the rain, didn't get washed out or anything. Maybe I shouldn't say that. So, as in all our city council meetings, the first 15 minutes we have for open mic. I want to ask if you have something other than what would be on the agenda that if you'd like to talk to city councillors, come up and like to have your name. But if it's on the agenda or you have signed up to speak, that time will be afforded during the meeting. So, again, if you'd like to make a comment or something to city council, please feel free to come up and if not, we'll start the meeting. So, would you go right ahead?
Yes ma'am, go right ahead.
We just have your name, please.
My name is Peggy Massey.
Please at the, at the mic.
I have her here.
Okay. But you've signed up, though, you have signed, you'll be afforded that op, you've signed up to be a speaker.
It's just my understanding that what I had signed up for isn't on your agenda this evening, so if it's not on your agenda, I thought I had to speak now.
You can speak now or you can go with the citizen's request to speak, either one.
Well, now that I'm up here, how about I don't hold up anybody else's time?
Let's do it.
That works just fine.
My name is Peggy Massey and I am primarily talking to you about some of the funds that we have. First, now that I'm a lifelong citizen, I've spent three-fourths of my life in this community and I grew up in Lincoln Park. I have lived in South Canyon, I have lived in North Canyon, and currently I live near the river, which I purchased my home only to find out a few things about this Arkansas River Valley project, your Arkansas River project. I understand this community. I grew up here and I understand that we need to keep the citizens happy, but we also need to make money for this town. I am appalled by the way this was handled. My next-door neighbor has lived there for 48 years. He is approaching 80 years old. He only recently saw your master plan that ran your trail down his driveway and through the heart of his land because it ends on Frazier, which also happens to make it run right outside my bedroom window, so yes, I have a vested interest. But most, what I want to speak on of that is really you need to reconsider, why are we spending that money? What do you hope to attain by spending that money? I understand, I don't understand, I know I don't understand public funds. I understand that some money comes from one place and some money comes from another place and that there's money that can only be spent on the Riverwalk because it's got to do with the lottery and blah, 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 blah. And I understand that we want to build our main street and we want to bring businesses in here and we want to bring tourists in here, but we don't want to run out our citizens who've had a home for 48 years or someone like me with a vested interest in the community. There's a couple of things I especially don't understand about the Griffin Park. One is your bluff access. Why would you, if you were considering an access for a little trail, why would you pick Jewett Street and Wells Drive? Where's everybody gonna park? One block over is Gasoline Alley that the Mennonite community owns. I don't know if they'd willing, be willing to sell it, but there's your adequate parking. But before I have to leave, because I've got one minute and five seconds left, other than a bridge, a walking bridge to that river, not more streetlights, I think that Walmart has proved we don't need any more lights on Highway 50. We need pedestrians to be able to walk back and forth, but nothing's gonna happen until you find a way, my entire, to acquire the crown jewel of this town, and that is the territorial prison. There sits your access to the Hogbacks, there sits your access to possibly an Old Soda Springs? Why is it that you can look at Mr. Cloninger's property, Mr. Smaller's property, Sells Lake, my property, but you can't look at the state of Colorado? Why is it that prison's been there since 1871? 400 inmates down there and it's one of the two infirmaries for the state. And I understand their hospice is there, their AIDS patients are there, their cancer patients are there. I get that. My 80, almost 80-year-old neighbor is right there shaking in his boots after paying his taxes. That's your crown jewel and you know it, and I know it. I grew up here. I don't know what you have to spend your money on, but I'm hoping that it isn't to push more people out of their beautiful community. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'd quote a wide variety of things, however. Anybody else like to come talk? Well, why don't we, do we have anybody for an invocation? Then we're gonna go ahead and call the, this meeting to order and let's do the pledge of allegiance. Would you please rise?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Gill.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Hockes.
Here.
Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Extremazek Hughes, we have a quorum.
Okay, now are there any written requests of citizens to speak?
We have received no written request to speak at this point.
Except the lady that already did it?
Correct.
Okay. Well, she left. Right? Okay, then I ask for approval of the minutes for the August 7th, 2017 regular city council meeting and August the 9th, 2017 general government meeting. Are there any corrections of those minutes? Mr. Meisner?
I don't know if it's a correction, but it's a comment. On the Southern Peaks discussion, I thought it was at least relevant, this is mentioning, no mention, but I thought it was at least relevant that none of the four-mile residents that were present spoke on the issue. Is that?
There was one.
Yes, there was a lady that spoke.
Okay, whatever.
Mr. Shepherd spoke.
So, strike that, then. Then...
Were you here?
Rick Shepherd spoke.
Rick Shepherd spoke.
I think I was. And then on the minutes for the government meeting, I, page one, item two, it's just a, it's a verbiage formality. It says, item three, limit to tent campers only, and I think the intent of the group was is that it would be campers with tents. I think that terminology would suggest a particular type of mechanism.
Some of the pop-ups are referred to as a, as a tent camper.
I just was referencing Mr. Brady's memo.
Okay.
I will, I will change it.
But the intent was as campers with tents.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Could I have a motion in a second, then?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the meetings for consent, or, I'm sorry, for the August 7th, 2017 regular city council meeting and the August 9th, general government meeting.
Second.
Second, Mr. Weed, would you call the roll, please?
As amended.
As amended with that small change.
As amended, correct.
Right.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Any council member announcements at this time? Ms. Smith?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to extend a thank you to our public library today for putting on an excellent community event for the eclipse today. They had a multiple ways to view the eclipse and several of our community members, abundant number of our community members came down there and kind of celebrated together this natural phenomenon that we're able to enjoy. So, I was really, I'm really happy about that.
All right, I'm gonna say something.
Go ahead.
Dennis, I knew you couldn't hold it there. I, I had the opportunity to go up to Wyoming to view the eclipse today and get back in time for this meeting and it was, I mean, if you ever get the chance, it's worth it. It's, I mean, it is the most amazing natural phenomenon I have ever seen in my life. It is stunning and certainly was worth the trip.
How fast did you drive coming back, Dennis?
My top speed was 200 miles an hour.
I love it.
I was in an airplane.
You flew up. And you got a shirt?
I have a shirt now.
Okay. All right, adoption of the agenda and consent agenda. Mr. Meisner, did you?
We have a meeting this week?
We have a...
Vision.
Vision.
Your meeting.
It'll be a vision committee meeting.
I'm a general...
Yeah, it's mine. It's a general, the vision committee meeting is at Wednesday at 4:00 in this building. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, just have one more comment, but I just feel it's important to, to make about our, our citizens' public comments that she made to us this evening, that it's un, that I want everyone to know here that we do take those comments very seriously. That's why we made available those first 15 minutes to public comment. But it's unfortunate that this is not the first occasion where someone comes to reprimand city council for their perceived worries and fears of things that are happening and have proceeded just to storm away out of the door and not opening up a constructive conversation where we could communicate with each other and, and find solutions or be able to take care of some of their fears and, and, and help alleviate that. And I think that's unfortunate. I think we have a lot of discussion to say about it and I want to make sure that it's clear that the master plan is only a recommendation of a lot of what-ifs, including what if an 80-year-old gentleman's posterity a couple of generations down the road decided to sell this property? What is, how could that potential sale far into the future impact the master plan? It's merely a recommendation, there's nothing legally binding on it and never, to our knowledge, has there been an eminent domain put on citizens' properties, at least legally or according to our records that we can see in the last 20 years and to our knowledge that we have that it has never been done.
Right. It's a tough thing to do and you gotta have the money to do it. Very expensive, you have to buy it, so that's strange. Okay. Tony, could you review the consent agenda items, please?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Number 5A would authorize city clerk to sign a intergovernmental agreement with Fremont County to conduct a November 7th, 2017 coordinated election. 5B would authorize temporary street closure at 4th from the alley south of Main to Royal Gorge Boulevard on September 24th from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m. for the Cup and Cone's fifth anniversary celebration, so hopefully people can make that. 5C would authorize temporary street closure on 7th Street from the alley south of Rutt Avenue to Harrison Avenue on September the 9th from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the grand opening of the Royal Gorge Vineyard. 5D would authorize temporary street closure at Skyline Drive from 9:30 a.m. till 10:30 a.m. on September the 9th for the annual Fremont Community Foundation toy run. And item 5E would authorize temporary street closure on 5th Street from Main Street to Macon from 6:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on September 23rd for the Fremont Adventure Recreation Bikes and Brews Event. Bid 5417 would be to purchase 2,000 pounds of sodium chloride from Equava Water Technologies in amount of $12,500. And staff, after having discussions with Bob Hartsman, we recommend pulling item 4317. This is a very significant matter, is to remove 20,000 cubic yards of sediment from the water treatment facilities, settlement pond. The sediment has been a significant issue since 1975 and it has to be addressed. Bob had budgeted in excess of $300,000, but we bid it out, we only got one bidder and the bid was over $800,000, so clearly the cost to do this work was much greater than we anticipated. Bob worked with the vendor to come up with a different game plan, which included just doing the dredging and de-watering of the sediment ponds and having other firms do the transportation disposal. In my opinion, legally, we, we worked with our city attorneys, it was sufficient legally to ward the bid, but I don't think it's in the spirit of competition and ensure that the public was getting the best bid. We only had one bidder, we were effectively changing the scope of the bid after the fact, so I think it's more prudent to rebid this for 2018. We're gonna take what we budgeted this year and add it to additional funds next year. The scope of this work is probably gonna be in the neighborhood of $900,000. So, that deserves serious competition. We think we'll get more bidders and we'll also clearly articulate that it will be two bids, one to dredge and de-water and a second bid to transport and dispose, because those are two different operations and we know there's a lot of local companies that are equipped to do the transportation disposal, so we'll get more local bidders too in this process. We delay this process, so that's what we would recommend. If the council would approve that, then we would suggest you pull this item.
Okay, the sediment pond is the big pond as there on Tunnel Drive?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that lined with any kind of film?
It's got a liner, yeah. And it's probably a lesson that these types of ongoing maintenance operations shouldn't wait for almost 40 years. It's much cheaper and easier to do this on a five, 10-year basis than waiting 40 years and having an enormous expense and operation to deal with it.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. And then there's a list of bills. Mr. Meisner?
Well, I guess my question, even though you're pulling that, my question was is that the original bid talked about 20,000 yards and the bid that we were supposedly warding was only 9,900 yards.
That's true.
Did that include the drying and transportation?
Yes, yes. But it would only, again, we only had, had less than half the resources to do the job, so I think it would be, we'll get an economy of scale, more bidding, more competition, I think a better general price if we do it at one time. We also saved at least $68,000 in not having to mobilize and demobilize twice, but just once, so there are a series of, of positive aspects if we delay this.
Is that, is that sludge contaminated? I mean, it's just regular?
No, but it has to be dried out and it is tested by the state before we can dispose it.
And I'm understanding that this is, the sludge that comes out of the river, I mean, we intake it?
Sediment, yeah.
And it sits in the sediment pond?
Yeah, it's basically 40 years of sediment.
Okay. Should be a lot of gold in that.
We'd take about 1,020-yard trucks to remove, so it's a big project.
There should be a lot of gold in that.
That's good math. We'll offer you the opportunity to pan it.
No.
Well, okay. And there's lots of questions. How long would that pond be down and do it in segments or?
No, the, it, it won't impact, they'll just be dredging and can still handle the water. Most likely this project, if we bid it out, would be conducted in the springtime.
Okay. Any questions? So, as I understand it, what we're gonna do is move for approval of the consent agenda with the removal of 43-17 at this time. Is that okay with everybody?
I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you, Tony. So, are there any other additions or corrections at this time? Could I have a motion in a second from council? Mr. Weed?
Hey, Mayor, members of council, I'd make the motion to prove, for the adoption of the agenda and consent agenda, removing bid number 4317.
Second.
Second, would you check heads? Any discussion with that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Tony, did you have a report for us?
Just, we, we did get some preliminary results from our employee survey. As you well know, the council authorized the first employee survey last year and it was a good benchmark and a good reflection of what the strengths and opportunities for improvement in the organization were. Overall, we've done better than, than last year. There clearly are strengths, but there's still opportunities for improvement and we'll share those results and those findings with you next week. And the citizen's survey effectively is done on August the 28th. We'll promote the online opportunity, even though it's not scientific or official, it still gives people an opportunity to weigh in who may not have received the written scientifically, randomly selected survey and we should get the results of that in early September, so we'll keep you tuned.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Item number seven is ordinance number 23, series 2017. This is a second reading. It's an ordinance referring a ballot issue for lodging tax. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number 23, an ordinance referring a ballot issue to the registered electors of the City of Canyon City, providing for a 5% lodging tax to be imposed for the purpose of promoting and marketing tourism and tourism-related special events and activities in Canyon City and the Royal Gorge Region.
We will need a motion in a second from council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 23, series of 2017 on second reading.
Second.
Second, Mr. Weed. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Meisner?
It's not really a discussion, it's an opinion. I, I just asked council to consider the fact that we're anticipating in the 2018 budget, the city allowed a, allocating some funds to, to this group. I would still suggest that council consider to delay this tax. There's gonna be potentially four tax questions on the ballot. I'm not suggesting that our public is not intelligent enough to see the difference, but the more tax, tax, tax we talk about, I think it increases the probability that maybe all of those get nixed. But I see nothing wrong with taking the committee that we have and funding it with some city funds and allowing that committee to get organized and to promote and to educate in terms of what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Okay. Any further, Ms. Schumacher?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to state that this is a tax that we don't pay as citizens and that we do have a committee in line and set up and they are all ready to operate and...
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Um, I just wanna make a comment to Councilmember Meisner. My concern about allocating $300,000 next year without going to the citizens says a significant jump in funds. The last two years, we have very cautiously given the SCTC $25,000 for marketing and I feel that would be appropriate to have the citizens speak and say that they're in favor of this concept before allocating such a significant, more of a $300,000 funding and that, for that industry, makes me a little nervous.
I recognize your position, but council's already authorized the committee.
Any comments? Discussion? Okay. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Approved by majority vote.
Thank you. Ordinance, uh, number eight is ordinance number 26, series 2017. This is a second reading as well. It's a zone change for 441 Four Mile Lane. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number 26, series of 2017, an ordinance rezoning certain real property within the City of Canyon City, Colorado, 441 Four Mile Lane.
Could I have a motion in a second from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Smith?
I move that we adopt ordinance number 26, series of 2017 upon second reading.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing and seeing none, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, number nine is ordinance number 27, series 2017. It's a second reading. It's a special use, review use accessory dwelling unit for 696 North Reynolds. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number 27, series of 2017, an ordinance amending section 17.24.050 of the municipal code to add there to a new subsection identifying a certain land use permitted only by special review. This is an accessory dwelling unit located at 696 North Reynolds Avenue.
Could I have a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 27, series 2017 on second reading.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hockes. Any discussions on that motion? Hearing and seeing none, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
And number 10 is ordinance number 28, series 2017. This is, and it also is a second reading. It's a zoning code amendment for Title 17 annoyances, or nuisances, I guess. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number 28, series of 2017, an ordinance amending section 17.44.050 of the Canyon City Municipal Code to add, to declare that violations of Title 17 are nuisances to provide for enforcement under the city's nuisance abatement procedure.
Could I have a motion in a second? Could have, it is. Could I have a motion in a second? Mr. Gill?
Mr. Mayor and council, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 28, series of 2017.
Second.
Uh, second for you.
Schumacher, second. Any discussion on that motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Weed?
Uh, I got a question for Dina. Have the owners of that property been cited for weeds?
Of which property?
Uh, oh, sorry, the St. Scholastica property.
They, as far as I know, in the past, they have.
I mean, currently, I mean...
We, not, um, not recently.
There is an amazingly aggressive effort going on to enforce and potentially cite residents for weed violations. I can't think of a bigger example. That place is covered with four-foot-tall weeds and has been for months. Have they been cited?
They have not been cited recently. We have been able to, through a community service worker, go out and cut the weeds in the tree lawn, which is on public property recently.
There's one piece of, uh, between the curb and the sidewalk that's been cut, there is seven acres of weeds there. It's, if, if we're gonna be busy pursuing everybody in town, we need to go after the big ones too, and that's a big one. And I don't think it's right to, well, that needs to be pursued.
Um, Councilmember Weed, I'm wondering if perhaps the delay was because the imminent purchase of the property was happening and we were waiting for that, because he had, has already made plans to abate the weeds. But you're right, it still needed to...
That doesn't count.
And we had, had a lot of discussions about...
Yeah.
Putting in those letters to St. Scholastica, perhaps as a motivation for the seller to finally get rid of that property and move on.
Yeah.
But I agree.
Yeah.
All need, all need to be equally cited.
Either that or we go cut them and bill them, but it's ridiculous.
I concur.
Mr. Gill?
I'm with you 100%. It's not just the little places, the big places need to be taken care of. This ordinance is gonna help us do that, because then it becomes a legal issue. So, no, but I, I see where you are and it's one of the biggest eyesores that we have and, you know, the most acreage probably within the city limits that hasn't been taken care of.
It's been going on.
I couldn't agree with you more.
I think it should have been taken care of several years ago.
It should have been, yep.
Any more discussion on the motion? Let's call a roll.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye, cut the weeds.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay. Okay, number eleven is ordinance number twenty-four, series of two thousand seventeen, this is a first reading. It's an ordinance repealing and reenacting chapter twelve point twelve and repealing twelve point twenty regarding work and encroachment on city-owned properties, is introduced in, on August today.
It was introduced at the previous meeting, the eighth...
We table it.
On the seventh, yeah, you guys introduced it on the seventh.
Okay, twenty...
Doesn't need to be introduced tonight.
So, reintroducing this, could you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number twenty-four, series of two thousand seventeen, an ordinance amending Title Twelve of the Canyon City Municipal Code by repealing and reenacting chapter twelve point one-two and repealing twelve point two-zero regarding work and encroachment on city property.
Mr. Ankenster, would you give us a report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. So, since you've last seen this, we've made four changes. Two of the changes were discussed at the last meeting, that were brought up by some concerns. The first one was twelve twelve point zero-eight-zero B on page nine, and that included exceptions for relocation for utility mains and significant facilities. There was some concern by the sanitation district, rightfully so, that ninety days wasn't adequate time to move something significant, so we've added some language to allow some negotiations with the city to make sure that that time is reasonable for those types of facilities. Then also, we made a change in twelve twelve zero-seven-zero H six, also on pa, well, on page eight, and the concern there was requesting bonds from everybody, when in the past, we had not required bonds of utilities, quasi municipal groups like the sanitation district, and also ditch companies. So, we put that exception language back in, and that's in there now. And then two other issues came up before we brought this to you today, and I believe the city clerk handed out those changes. Basically, on page two, the definition of work, we changed that to include only work, maintenance, or surveying that requires street lane closures or excavation. That way, someone like the sanitation district who's out just cleaning sewer mains with their VAC truck or something like that, or televising or surveying, they don't require a permit. And that made sense to us, and so we made that change. And then also, twelve point twelve point zero-seven-zero K two on page eight. I guess that was one of the ones that was previously discussed, was existing encroachments do not require permits. The way it was worded previously was not quite understood whether those existing encroachments required permits or not, so we cleaned up that language, made it clear that those existing... So, for existing encroachments for utilities, they don't have to go back and permit all those existing locations.
Can you cite that again?
That was twelve twelve seventy K two. And we did receive feedback from Jeff Blue with the sand district, he's here tonight, if you have any questions for him, but we received feedback that he's okay with the changes we've made. That's all I have, if you have any questions.
Is Mr. Blue here? Oh, there you are. Is that the way you understand it, Mr. Blue?
Yeah, I would really appreciate Adam, who I voted Friday, kind of back and forth on some emails, and...
Yes. And, um... And also would like to have your, your position that you hold with the...
Thank you, Mayor and council. Jeff Blue, District Manager, Fremont Sanitation District, appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Yes, Adam and I exchanged emails on Friday and also today. You know, I think it's addressed the issues, we just had, we didn't object, we just had issues with some of the language, I think the language has been shored up somewhat, where I believe it protects the sanitation district and, and our patrons, makes it a little more workable for us, so I, I think we're very happy with it as it's, as it's written. So, I appreciate, you know, consideration from the council on that.
Thank you, Mr. Blue. Any other questions?
I have a question, is there anything in these provisions that are above and beyond what is already existing besides the bond prices, bond limits, and permit prices?
Yes, so now, as we just talked about with the definition of work, anything that requ, anything that takes excavation or lane closure, so, for example, in the past, someone could put a crane up in the middle of Main Street and not require, and not need a permit. So, something like that, if it, if they've got to close the road to do something, even though they may not be digging, that would require a permit, so that would be a change.
How long would it take to get a permit to put a crane on Main Street?
If you're licensed and bonded, you come to City Hall and you fill out half a page, and you're done. And we're working, next year, we'll talk more about this at budget time, but we're working on trying to automate that more and get, get an online permitting process, but currently, you have to come into City Hall and sign the document.
So, you, you've gone to the sanitation district and gotten their approval, and probably a lot of other larger businesses that deal with the city on these issues are very familiar with it. What's the impact on the regular citizen?
None really, because this is, this is, so a regular citizen who is hiring a contractor to work on their sewer line...
Sure.
They were already following these rules, they were just in different chapters or covered by different policies, they weren't all in one place in the code. That was one, one of the reasons we did this big overhaul on this, was to bring it all together, but it won't be any difference to them.
Do you have any words that you want to say in rebuttal to Mr. Lipis's comments that he made at last city council meeting concerning the increase in bond price and the impact that it's having on our local citizens who have to make cuts in the street?
Sure, I, I think he was referring more to the street damage restoration fee, which is a separate issue, completely separate from this section of the code. But relative to the bond, an interesting thing there, I'll leave the contractor unnamed, but there's a, a local contractor who brought in their fifteen thousand dollar bond last week. I told them that they didn't need to bring it in yet because the ordinance hadn't passed, and they said that's okay, because it's so small, it didn't cost them anymore. So...
And you're saying anymore than what the old bond cost them?
The old thousand dollar bond, so they're saying that for them and their bank, thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars didn't cost them anymore.
And what's that usually run a contractor for a year?
Well, it's about, usually, I've heard four to five percent, of whatever the bond amount is.
Okay.
What about the permit fee? What would the difference...
Permit fees aren't changing with this code. Permit fees are going to remain the same. We're not changing any fees with this ordinance.
Is there anything in this ordinance that's above and beyond what's currently in the code, besides the work?
The higher, the higher bond?
Just the higher bond?
Is the big one, yep.
What about twelve twelve forty? Is it not additional? Incidental encroachments? Ninety-six gallon trash containers?
No, there's, there's always been incidental encroachments, we're just, we're defining them now.
But that, but specifically, the ninety-six gallon is an additional requirement that wasn't in previous code, is that not correct?
That's correct, there was, there wasn't, there wasn't a code that defined what an incidental encroachment was, so everything was an encroachment. And, and there was no different levels of encroachment. So, technically, that trash can that was out there was, was an encroachment. Now, what we're saying is, it is an encroachment, but it's incidental and doesn't need a permit. Because when we were, when we were locking down what encroachments were, we didn't want to capture those incidental things in that definition.
Okay, thank you.
What about the minor encroachments where you have a fence, as I understand it, would, is that when you sell your property, does that go with it? I mean, do you have to come in and reply for the permit to have it there?
You know, we can, I can talk with the attorneys about that, our current form requires them to come back and get a, a new license agreement for each owner. I had talked to the previous city attorney about that, and we kind of went back and forth on whether that was appropriate or not as a legal issue, but that doesn't change either currently right now. A minor encroachment will require a license agreement, and that's always been the case.
Sure.
But we handled that by policy, now it's in the code.
Okay. How long does it take to get one of those? Do you have any idea?
Um, usually, maybe, once they talk to me, maybe two days to fill it out and get it recorded.
Okay. I've seen them for fences, I just want to say more.
Yeah.
And what about its impact on horizontal landscaping?
So, horizontal landscaping, it will control more of what we do or don't want in the right of way. Again, we've had some policy and some suggestions to landowners. An example is, in some of our mountain subdivisions, Dawson Ranch, Wolf Park, that sort of stuff, we've had people who want to place large boulders out next to the roadway. This covers that kind of stuff now, where we have a code to cite, so before, you know, code enforcement didn't have anything to cite, they would just go out and say, well, the city engineer says it's dangerous, you need to move it, and they legally had to, but it just, it wasn't as clean a process, and, and it wasn't always effective in handling it that way. So, we've better defined what type of horizontal landscaping is allowed in the right of way, and, and what they can do.
Any further questions from council? Are there any comments from the audience, or would you like to come up and address at the microphone? Okay, are there any further comments from council? Hearing and seeing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second. This is the first reading. Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, I move adoption of ordinance number twenty-four, series of two thousand seventeen, on first reading.
Second. Dennis, can I have you amend that motion, since we already introduced it, so you'll need to amend it to include those changes?
All right.
Sorry.
I meant, it's quite all right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, make the motion to approve ordinance number twenty-four, series of two thousand seventeen, with the amendments that we were presented with.
And second.
Ms. Schumacher, still second. That's fine, I'm happy with that, are you happy with that? We're, we're good with that.
Adam, thank you for the work on this, too.
Thank you, thank you.
Schumacher, second. Any discussion on that motion? We had that, all right, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Nay.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Approved by a majority vote.
Okay, twelve A is a public hearing for a zone change for six fifteen Pike Avenue. I'm hereby opening the public hearing, could I have your sir, your report from the Community Development Director?
Sure, and at this time, I would ask the applicant to join me at the table, and for the presentation to be keyed up.
We probably should have some limiting factor on it, I don't want to curtail anybody's discussions, but I would not, is that possible, Dina, to say fifteen, twenty minutes? Mr. Butler, does that seem fair?
That seems fair to me.
How about five minutes?
We'll be as brief as we can.
I just was trying, but if you feel you can do it, let's, let's try and be concise, because we've got a lot of people probably would like to address us, and I'd like to hear them.
Sure, absolutely.
Let's remember that this is sort of a quasi judicial hearing, so it's like being in, in court, loud noises from the audience and things of that nature, which I know none of you would ever do, wouldn't be admissible. So, let's just look at it as a court hearing, and the judge might cite you for contempt. I won't, but I just want to make it sure, this is a quasi judicial hearing that we're actually having here, and that's how we're going to conduct it, okay? Dina, would you go ahead?
Yes. So, again, this is a rezoning, a zone change at six fifteen Pike Avenue, also known as Saint Scholastica, from R two T M U to R three T M U. Technology's not working. Can you guys forward the slides? Okay, thank you. So, just an overview, and the address is nine fifteen Pike Avenue, it's sort of the reddish-orange box that's highlighted on the aerial, the size of the site is approximately seven point five acres, and its location is, is basically in Old Canyon, or sort of the north end of Old Canyon, within Canyon City. The site is a ten-minute walk from Main Street, it is, this is, so this is not working, unfortunately. It's about a three-minute walk to the east, to Washington Elementary School, which is just east of Ninth Avenue, it's about a ten-minute walk to the high school, and about a twenty-minute walk to the middle school. Next. The site, again, it's a little shifted there, also in the reddish-orange highlight, is also within walking distance to several existing parks and open space, starting with Margaret Park, the rectangle on the north, to Gray Dean on the east, the Little Triangle Park, and then, is it Magdalene? Which is immediately west of the site. It's also a quick, couple-minute walk to the Hogback Trail System, and a little further walk east to the city pool, or community pool that you can see highlighted, a little bit further to the east. Historically, this site, and the broader site, was actually a much larger site, was used as a military school when this was all open land, before it was subdivided. When the military school actually closed, and that land was sold, a portion of it, this seven point five-acre site, or a portion of that, was then sold to Saint Scholastica for their school for many years. And it really started with the East Building, as everybody knows, is the historic structure that's identified as a national landmark. That was actually built in eighteen ninety-seven, but it was built on basically an eighteen eighty foundation from the old military school, when that building, from what I understand, was condemned after a little bit of explosion from some of the prison workers in the Hogback area. So, in the Residence Hall, which is the second building that we'll be speaking a little bit more about this evening, was built in nineteen sixty-one, and that's on the southern portion of the site. The site is bound by Floral Avenue on the north, and Pike Avenue in the south, and then Sixth and Seventh, west and east. Next. Here are just a few images of those existing key structures that we'll be focusing on, the left image is the Residence Hall, built in nineteen sixty-one, it's about a three-story building. The historic East Building, which is technically about a two-and-a-half-story building, although it's probably about forty-five feet tall. And then the third image is just the open space or vacant land to the north of the site. So, the applicant submitted a rezoning application, again, from R two T M U to R three T M U. The initial program that came in in the application included forty-two apartments, basically reusing the Residence Hall, and included eight apartments in the East Building, forty-eight townhomes for a total of ninety-eight units. And then a future phase in that initial application was a little looser, it was either reuse and/or removal of any of the other buildings, and that was just not identified in the original application. So, it went to Planning Commission on the July eighteenth meeting, there was a discussion at Planning Commission, highly attended, with over a hundred attendees attending that meeting, and at that time, Planning Commission recommended denial of the application with a three-to-two vote. So, just a little bit of background and context of the site, so again, the site is the, the large seven point five-acre site in the middle. To the sort of east and north, the lighter yellow you see is currently R one zoning, and that allows a forty-foot height limit currently, there's a few, it's the orange spots or specks you see as the R one A zoning, which in the city's zoning code allows a forty-foot height limit. The R two zoning, which is to the west and the south, and is currently on the site, is a forty-five-foot height limit, and then R three, which is more of the kind of lavender that you see, which there's one component across the street to the south, and then further closer to downtown that you can see, that if you're building one to eight-unit buildings, you cannot exceed fifty-five feet in height, or nor three stories, or if it's more than eight-unit buildings, you can go up to ninety feet in height. So, that's the existing zoning height regulations, in a sense of what the context of the existing zoning is for the site. So, I also pulled some images together, because I know a lot of times, people, we talk about a number of stories of buildings versus actual height, and so I think it's important to just recognize a little bit what is happening in the, in the existing surrounding neighborhood. So, the first line is what would be considered a one-story structure, and a lot of times, when you hear about stories and structures, a lot of that's used for historic preservation surveying, so that's the typical terminology that's used when surveying homes, you say it's a one-story building, one-and-a-half story building, you don't go in and say the exact height of the building. So, these are just examples by number of stories to give you an idea. So, the first one is a one-story structure, the second line gives you an illustration of what would be considered a one-and-a-half-story structure, so there's some living space currently on a second level, but based on the roof form, it's considered a one-and-a-half-story structure. The bottom photo is, again, a one-and-a-half-story structure for the principal structure, and this is an example of an A D U or an accessory dwelling unit, if it's used as that or not, I don't know. But I think the point here is it shows you where, on a typical fifty or sixty-foot lot in this area, when you add an A D U, you're basically immediately doubling the density, so that gets a little bit to the density discussion. Next slide. So, on this slide, the first line is what would we be considered two-story structures, the next line is a two-and-a-half-story structure, and then the last line, and I know these are a little difficult to see here, but there's actually a few existing fourplex structures that exist across the street from the site to the west and to the south, of which one is a little bit newer, you can see, and one is more historic in nature. So, the city's comprehensive plan states, "Since the housing stock in Canyon City does not adequately meet the needs of some segments of the population, the Canyon City community seeks to provide a mix of housing opportunities for its residents with a supply of affordable for-sale and for-rent housing." And that's from the two thousand one comprehensive plan. So, yes, it's sixteen years old, but that is still that overarching vision document for the entire community. So, a little bit more in housing, I know, since I've started, and I know since Ryan Stevens, our Economic Development Director, started, we've both been trying to get some numbers on where, where things are with housing in the community, and so for this, I've been able to pull some of that together. So, again, first to start with what the application, that the applicant has submitted. So, from a rental standpoint, the applicant submitted, and its staff's understanding in that application that no Section Eight vouchers would be accepted, that the Resident Hall apartments will be marketed to fifty-five ply... that the Residence Hall apartments will be marketed to fifty-five plus and that the East Building will be luxury apartments. So just a little bit on the current market from what we could find out. Basically, the current rental market in the community is currently less than 2% vacancy and that is an estimate. But really, anything at or under 5% is a build market or meaning there's a need in the community for rental housing units in the community. So then I also looked at CHAF, Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, because they every year set limits per county on what income should be in order to qualify for anything at 80% AMI, which is area median income or lower, which is basically affordable housing. So I pulled those numbers. So basically, 100% of AMI, meaning you make 100% of the area median income for a rental, for a one-bedroom and two-bedroom, you can see the numbers there and then you can see what those numbers are at 80% of AMI. So again, in terms of general housing terms, it's very important to realize that anything considered at 80% or less of AMI, again, or area median income, is considered affordable housing in terms of building housing, whether it's for sale or for rent. Back up one. So and then just generally, anything from about 80% of AMI to approximately 120% of AMI, and that changes per every single unique district, depending on location, is usually considered attainable housing. And that's a term that's been growing very much in the last few years in the industry.
Dina, I've got a question. And this would be for Cory, actually. The three things that are listed under the staff's understanding, no Section 8, fifty-five plus and luxury apartments, are any of those three conditions actually enforceable?
No.
Okay.
For the city to enforce them creates potential Fair Housing Act amendment concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then moving on to the for-sale market. So from, again, from the applicant's standpoint, from what we understand, and this was the original application that came into Planning Commission, it was forty-eight townhomes, which would be for sale in the $150,000 to $165,000 range. So now talking a little bit about the current market. There was recently, I'll call it the prior study, a study completed for the city looking at affordability. And from that, basically, they identified that an income of $43,000 or $760 income is required for a $160,000 home in the Canyon City area. So that gives you an order of magnitude. And based on that study, their recommendation was that there was a need for up to 120 units needed for households in the 120 to 160K range. So what else is happening in the local market? Based on a May 2 multiple listing service, homes for sale, the median asking price was $263,000 and that is basically 73% more than the median sales price of homes sold in 2016. Year-to-date, homes being constructed in Canyon City, this is just construction costs, not land, are averaging basically $234,000. That's what's being constructed now, year-to-date, on average, in the city, just construction costs. Days on market is down 24% year-over-year from June 2016 to June 2017. And we also looked specifically within a quarter-mile of the site, what's been happening and based on that, it appears that recent average sales price is approximately $187,000. Next. So application summary. Basically, four steps or four phases were identified by the applicant. The first one is converting the Residence Hall for apartments. This would need a commercial building permit site plan for that specific stage of the process. The second one would be converting the historic structure into additional apartments and at that point, that would trigger a subdivision process. The third step was building either the for-sale or potentially for-rent fourplex townhomes on approximately the northern half of the property. And then, as I mentioned prior, the future wasn't really known yet what was going to happen with the remainder of the buildings, whether they were going to stay or go. Next. So I know you can't read this and this was in your staff report, but basically what we did is we went back and identified the initial, what the applicant had requested, the initial staff recommendations from the Planning Commission meeting. Since the Planning Commission hearing, there were some conversations with some of the neighbors, a neighborhood group, representing themselves as the concerned neighbors of 615 Pike Avenue and we had some conversations with them in terms of their wants and desires. And so then ultimately, the fourth column basically identifies what the current staff recommendation is coming to council. And with that, I'll just move to the next slide, which should summarize that. So basically, our recommendation to council is that a rezoning be approved but outlined and conditioned as such. That number one, a portion of the site that includes the Residence Hall and historic school building on approximately 2.6 acres are to be rezoned to R3 and that no additional height or addition to the buildings outside of what may be needed for ADA or egress requirements shall occur on those two existing structures. Number two, that a portion of the site north of the Residence Hall and historic school building, approximately 4.8 acres, is to remain R2 zoning. No newly constructed building in R2 shall be taller than 35 feet in height. Number three, that the total allowable dwellings for the Saint Scholastica property or 7.5 acres or more or less shall not exceed eighty-two units and that fourth, a PUD development plan shall be submitted by the applicant and approval obtained for the entire site. So that's staff's recommendations. And I don't know if you want to take, have some questions of me now or here the applicant, have, go through their presentation?
Yes, we would like to have comments from the applicant, if you care to make any this time.
They actually have a...
Let me just ask a question real quickly here. Again, this will be for Cory. Since R2 zoning allows houses or structures to be built forty-five feet in height, can we restrict this R2 zoning to thirty-five feet? Or is that just a suggestion again?
If the applicant agrees to the condition, it is acceptable. One of the ways in which the entire recommendation works is that if you approve staff's recommendation, the existing Residence Hall will be a use-by-right without further action effectively as a matter of zoning, so they can use that portion. That condition gives the applicant the ability to make use of the property. And so allowing the applicant to make use of the property, albeit only a portion, in conjunction with the conditions, makes it allowable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Butler, would you like to take some time to about ten minutes? Five minutes? Ten minutes? Fifteen? No, I'm just kidding.
I'll try for five.
Please go right ahead. That'd be nice.
Thank you. So we have a video here of the property that we did last Saturday. So you guys can see what it currently looks like from the sky, basically.
So I'll be brief. Basically, I have a vision of the entire project. And what I wanted to do was address some of the issues that came up in the planning and zoning meeting last time. And so I wanted to show the community and neighbors around the property that we did make compromises to try and bridge the project together financially and to fit some of the requests that they had of me. So, the very basic beginning, I will tell you that we took out the fourplex design. It was a modular fourplex. And so we took that out, we eliminated it totally, and we went to duplexes. These are duplex townhomes that we're actually looking to build onsite, provided we could find the labor here and Pueblo and surrounding areas. So we do plan on starting with the, just to let you know, we're starting with the dorms first because it has a lot of asbestos, and so we want to clean that up pretty quickly. Our biggest fear is that when the windows are open in that place, it gets out in the community, it could make people very sick. So we do plan on taking it in phases. I see the dormitory area being forty units targeted to age fifty-five plus. The way we look at this site, it's going to be a mixed-income project. With the historical home, we do look at those as eight units of luxury apartments. And so that would be the higher-end product on that site. Phase three, we definitely have the townhomes duplexes. And I do have a visual of how that should look here pretty quickly. It's coming up in the next few slides. The compromise we've made from last time is basically, I know the site was zoned for ninety-two units, we're actually scaling it back about ten units. So a maximum of eighty-two units on the site. And this is a sketch of the property in itself here. Now, these are some of the duplexes that were bought in by the neighborhood that surround the project. And I actually like the design, so I wanted to incorporate that because we thought it fit into the community that's around there. So right now, when I, I've been in the building several times, and I've been on the site several, more than I care to mention, times here, but I've seen so many things that, you know, I've seen people sleeping in the property itself. I've seen drug paraphernalia, I've seen needles, I've seen all kinds of things in there. So, and this is more recent stuff because every time I went back, I've seen more and more of that. And so the first thing we want to do is secure the area. This is a project, hold on just a second. So basically, I'm just saying, I want to secure the area so that we can clean that up. The faster we put people there, the better it's going to be because the community can afford to self-police itself. So this is a project we just did in downtown Colorado Springs. This is how it looked out there, in case anyone wants to know.
Steve, you want to go ahead?
Okay. Thank you. There was a lot of concern about crime and traffic in this area. And a lot of the crime that's been recognized has been mainly from vandals or drug use in the area.
Could I just interrupt you? I don't have your name or what you do.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. My name is Steve Savage, and I'm the project coordinator for Mr. Butler on the project.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what I did was I talked with Deputy Chief Alan Cooper. And we went through the files for the last three years and found that the crime and traffic problems in the area were pretty minimal compared to other parts of the city. The biggest problem they've had has been the vandalism and the drug use. And it's our contention that with renovation of the project, we're going to eliminate both of those because there'll be people physically living there that can take care of it.
You're going back.
Wrong way. The traffic, we looked at all the traffic patterns in that area, how many accidents, speeding violations, stop sign, and they weren't relatively higher than too many other areas in the city.
I do want to say something about the traffic, actually. When we first submitted to change this zoning on the property, I heard the neighbors telling me at the last meeting that to redo those facilities such as the pool, the theater, and the gym would actually bring traffic to their community. So what we decided to do was eliminate those facilities because a lot of it is beyond repair. And so by us doing that, will give us a lot more room for things like the community garden and interior parking so that people can park in their garages and off-street in the interior of the property.
So the crime issue has been relatively minor except for an occasional burglary, drug use, and vandalism. Now, we've had a lot of negative comments, and I've managed to keep track of every email, every comment that's been addressed. And even though we have received some negatives, we have received positive comments also. And on a count-by-count basis, we're averaging right now about two to three to one. So we're getting two or three positive comments from the community as a whole in favor of the project versus one negative comment. And in closing, you know, somebody was very wise, Adam Messer wrote this, says, "I don't know the key to success, but the key to failure is trying to please everyone." And our goal is to work with the community, not to alienate the people in the community. We're open to input, and if we can utilize the input and work with them, so be it. But in the end, it has to be looked at as a business venture also, to meet the needs of housing in the Canyon City area. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So this is the overall vision of the project that I have. So it's a slideshow, so I'll let you guys see this, and I'll open it up for questions if you guys have questions for me. This is the community garden.
I think it should be noted, Mr. Mayor, that these are renderings only, that it's not the absolute final product, but it's very close to what we want to do.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you. Get the lights turned up. Are there any questions at this time to the applicant from council?
Do you have a question? You, earlier in discussions, you had mentioned cooperating with the city for use of the pool and community center. And what parts are you saying now that you're going to be eliminating from?
Yeah, I actually came down last week to talk to the city, and they thought it would probably be better that they build new facilities elsewhere, just because of the condition. I think a few, what was it, four weeks ago, you guys went up there?
Right, and some members of the city visited the site probably about a month ago now or more.
Right. And there, you know, I don't know how much it's going to cost to fix. So, and my thing as a developer, it looks pretty old, and so to restore that may take more time and money than it's worth.
So which features are you eliminating? Like, you're actually going to tear them down and...
The pool, the gym, and the theater.
What about the tennis courts? Are those going as well?
Yes, they will go.
What about the chapel? Is that the theater?
Chapel, no, it's across from the theater. Were you talking about the historic homes, sir?
No, the chapel.
Chapel, yes, that's coming down.
Okay.
The only thing that we're looking to remain would be the historic home, which has the historic value, of course, we can't tear that down, and I wouldn't, because I think it's in the best condition, better than the dorms itself. And so the dorms and the historic home will remain.
Mr. Meisner?
No, I don't have a...
Oh, I thought you were... I'm so used to that hand going up that I just jumped over there, I'm sorry. Anyone else? Mr. Weed?
Well, I, in the, kind of, in this, I don't know what we want to call it here, this little grid that we got here, the, it looked like the final staff recommendation was for a PUD for this site, and we haven't talked about a PUD tonight. And have, has staff changed their mind on that, or...
So the modification from, so the recommendation to planning commission was to have R3 over the entire site with various conditions. And one of those conditions was to require either use of the TMU, which exists on the property, or a PUD, or a PDD. So one of the three tools that the city has. So we've refined that, and now we're recommending the PUD.
Okay. I didn't see that in our, in the slides, and so I wasn't sure.
That was number four on the recommendations.
And it's on the ordinance as well.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Can you define for me what your luxury apartments would be in the historical building?
Well, the historical building in itself is kind of a town, private thing. I mean, I think it's a historical landmark, is what it is. So, you know, to try to turn that into multiple units, such as like fifteen units or something, would put too many people in one place. So, right now, it's about a fourteen thousand square foot building, so we may look at a thousand square foot, eight thousand, or using eight thousand of those square feet to create luxury two-bedroom apartments.
Okay. And I saw, and I appreciate your willingness to go from the fourplexes to duplexes, and your willingness to listen to the citizens on the aesthetics and the outward appearance of those. Although, when I saw it on the diagram or your slideshow, that they, you know, they are very pleasant-looking, but do you think that they're, it could fit in more with the historical nature of the area, where everyone is absolutely, you know, it's like cookie cutter, they're all exactly, rows of the same houses?
Ma'am, we've been in contact with one of the home builders, and I don't know the name of the person that submitted the two drawings that you saw, the two sketches. The double unit with the garage is approximately twenty-five hundred square feet, divided by two units would be about twelve hundred. They're three-bedroom. The smaller units, the gray one, is about nine hundred square feet each, and it's got entrance on opposite ends of the building. What the slide didn't show, because we didn't have the information in time to incorporate it, was we'd like to alternate. In other words, have a large unit, twenty-five hundred square, and then next to it, we'd put a smaller unit, and then another large unit and a smaller unit. And the color schemes, we can work with the builder, they will paint the homes, finish the home's exterior to match what's in the community. And the reason that we decided to go with the two options and incorporate them into the plan was we wanted to break the skyline. We didn't want it to look like a row house. So we broke it up. Now we have different heights with the buildings, and I think it fits in better with the community.
Okay. And I also noticed in the slideshow that you also have, you know, the community garden, it looked like the pond was going to be restored and other water features and maybe a little bit of green space.
Right, yes.
Would that be open to neighbors to be able to enjoy?
The community garden will, because actually, that's a feature for the community itself, the surrounding community. That's why it's on the exterior of the property so that neighbors can come and help take care of it, basically. But the pond itself, I think it would be used by the residents more so than the community, just kind of as a sitting area.
And what is your asking price on your apartments and the dorms?
The dorms itself will range, the one-bedrooms are arranged from six fifty to seven fifty. The two-bedrooms, and we do plan on having eight two-bedrooms, thirty-two one-bedrooms. So the eight bedrooms will probably be from, anywhere from seven fifty to eight twenty-five.
Does that fit into the equation of affordable housing?
Absolutely. I think we'll...
And does it borderline on the lower-income housing?
It's middle, I would say. You know, as I eat at restaurants around here, I talk to different people like waitresses and your retail workers, and I just ask them, hey, if I had to give you a one-bedroom apartment, what do you think you can afford to pay on you on? And when I tell them this price, they say yes. I can't find anything else around here at that price that's halfway decent.
And it includes utilities? Is that correct?
It won't include utilities, that will be subdivided. It may include water, but your electrical and other things you're going to pay for.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Is the old existing kitchen, is that going to be involved in any way with the plan, or is that going to be completely out?
No, sir, we're going to take the kitchen out. The kitchen in itself creates a liability if we would leave it there. The insurance costs would rise significantly.
So does each apartment unit have its own kitchen?
It will, kitchen and bath.
Okay.
Any further questions from council? Okay, well, let's have comments from the audience. Do you have written?
Yeah, we'll set those to three minutes apiece. And again, if you agree, we don't want, you know, if you agree, you can say you agree, but we don't need to be repeating over and over and go over again if you have the same comment. So I'd appreciate that in terms of time. So we will limit these to three minutes.
I'll just remind everybody, we've gotten the request forms. If you haven't filled one of those out or haven't gotten it in to me, please do so after we start speaking, and I'll meet you either over there or over here. First one is from Dawn Paxton, I-31 Floral.
Well, I guess with all due respect to Mr. Butler, he's changed his mind twelve times on this project. Every time the paper comes out, it's something different. Every time I hear him talk, it's something different. At the beginning, he was going to restore the swimming pool, and he was going to be a real nice guy, the swimming pool was going to be there, the tennis courts are going to be there for the neighbors, whoever wanted to participate, and it was great. Then it was back to, well, I'm not sure, it may not work, and then it was back to, oh yeah, we're going to keep those, and now they're gone. Everybody here's going to tell you about the influx of traffic there, it's going to be horrendous. He's talking about, what, ninety-eight apartments? And he's talking about people sharing apartments, if there's two people in each apartment there, that's, that's just in, just in the units, that's over two-hundred-and-fifty cars. I don't know who goes to the high school or ever drives by there, that's about twice as many cars as there is at the high school. So those are going to be all in our block. Our, our, all of our homes are going to drop, and everybody in the neighborhood knows that they're going to, the price of our homes are going to drop because of this. I believe that when he talks about, he won't do the Section Eight, he's a businessman like everybody else. If he can't rent them, he'll let anybody in there that he can get in there, because that's just good business. And I've lived there for three or four years, I've seen the police over there maybe twice at that place, and, you know, I don't, we don't, if the police are there, they come at night with their lights out, or they come during the daytime in unmarked cars and crawl through the weeds, which Mr. Weed brought up, you can't really tell what's going on there. And speaking of the weeds, I think most of the residents, the people who live around there, would rather see the weeds there than all these apartments and all the chaos that's going to go on with this guy. If he could just come with one straight story, it'd be different, but it changes every time he comes here. The, I just, I don't have any faith in the guy, that's all. I mean, he changes his story over and over. A lot of us don't know what a PUD is, or TUG, or whatever they are, we don't, we don't know what those things mean. And he wants to get as many people in there as he can. He says he wants, oh, yeah, we talked to the community, we're going to do this real nice thing. He's going to do whatever he pleases in there unless there's some way we can block him from putting in three-story buildings or four-story buildings, because he'll do it if he gets the chance. I know business, I know how it is, and when people can't make up their minds, they're going to change them to their good every time they get a chance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Paxton.
You bet.
No, no, wait a minute, we're not going to do that, remember? Please. You don't do that in court, you don't do that here. So thank you.
Next one we have is Gloria Marks, 140 Morning Dove Drive.
Hello. I have been a physical therapist assistant for thirty-five years in this community. Twenty of those years, I have worked home health. And so I go to people's homes and see where they are living. We have a very high amount of geriatric people living here in Canyon City, a lot of wisdom in those people. And they're getting older and not able to stay in their homes, yet they want to be independent. And so where do they have to go? Where do they have affordable living space? I think that working on that dormitory first, fifty-five and older, I have plenty of patients now that I see that are looking for that, and they don't have it. And so they stay in these bad living conditions in their older homes, which deteriorate because they cannot afford to take care of them themselves. I think, you know, if we're looking at making money, it would have brought apartment buildings right away. That's what we want, all these people. It looks to me like they're spacing it out, giving it pretty space, it's a beautiful area to live in, older folks would love to live there, younger people, we want younger families to come and give them a beautiful place to live. It's a wonderful area where St. Scholastica was as a school. And, you know, they can learn the virtue of being a good neighbor and taking care of the properties. So I think it's a great thing for this city that we have this come in here, and I would like to back it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. Next?
Next we have is John Hammerick, 108 Dewey Road.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm John Hammerick, 108 Dewey Road. And I'll probably take us in a little bit different direction here. I'm referring to a July 5th email that you sent to the city, Mr. Butler, and in it, you made a statement that I would like some more information on if I could. It says that there's a potential spillage of contaminants in the, in the building currently. The contaminants that you were talking about, was that the asbestos?
Yes, sir, it is.
Was that solely the asbestos?
I don't know, that's what I seen on the report. And I got that from the realtor.
Thank you, that answers my question, sir. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammerick. Next?
Next one is Autumn Dever, 1328 Woodmore Road.
Hi, I'm the Housing Director for the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments. So, every resident in Fremont County deserves a place to call home. The current vacancy rate, like was mentioned earlier, is two percent. And with the current high rents and wages that have not increased equally, it's more and more difficult to find a place to live. It's taking an average of a hundred and twenty days or four months for someone to locate suitable housing for their families. A person earning minimum wage, nine dollars and thirty cents, has to work sixty-four point two hours a week in order to pay the fair market rent, which is HUD's definition of rents, for a two-bedroom, of seven-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars here in Fremont County. A person on social security, earning the basic benefit of seven-eighty-five a month, can afford two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars in rent based on HUD's definition of what affordable housing is, which is paying thirty percent of your income towards your rent and your utilities. So where can you find a place to live in Fremont County for two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars? You can't. So, they definitely can't afford the seven-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. There are over sixty-five-hundred households in Fremont County who are paying over thirty percent of their income for housing costs. And with zero affordable housing units being built for the past three years in Fremont County, the need is overwhelming and growing. Flexibility in housing makes sense for environmental, lifestyle, and financial reasons. When seniors with disabilities or long-term health care needs don't have access to affordable housing, they're at risk of entering into assisted living facilities prematurely. While our population is living longer, one in five Americans will be sixty-five or older by 2030. And the cost of goods and services continues to rise while income levels decline into retirement. A senior that owns an older home, free and clear, and they have the cost of taxes, insurance, utilities, repairs, trash removal, lawn care, snow removal, those items generally exceed the cost of living in a senior, and in a senior development, all of those things are included, they can more likely afford to live there. So this project is a great start to helping with the housing crunch in our community, and I do support this, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dever.
Thank you.
Next?
Next we have is Brenda Claflin.
You may want to pull the mic down. Before you start my, before you start the clock, I need to ask a clarifying question. And it kind of related to what Mr. Paxton was talking about. We had met, a couple of neighbors and I had met with Mr. O'Rourke and Ms. Bernath, and we thought we had understood what the new application was going to include, so I just want to make sure. The application that you're proceeding with has those four conditions on it, is that correct?
So the, the application that was originally submitted by the applicant has not changed?
and the cost, they have the cost of taxes, insurance, utilities, repairs, trash removal, lawn care, snow removal, those items generally exceed the cost of living in a senior, and in a senior development, all of those things are included. They can more likely afford to live there. So this project is a great start to helping with the housing crunch in our community. Um, and I do support this, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dever.
Thank you.
Next.
Next we have is Brenda Claflin.
You may wanna pull the mic down.
Yeah, thank you. Before you start my, uh, before you start the clock, um, I need to ask a clarifying question. And it kind of related to what Mr. Paxton was talking about. Um, we had met, a couple of neighbors and I had met with, um, Mr. O'Rourke and, um, Ms. Bernath. And we thought we had understood what the new application was going to include. So I just wanna make sure. The application that you're proceeding with has those four conditions on it, is that correct?
So the, the application that was originally submitted by the applicant has not changed. That, that has not changed from Planning Commission to Council. Based on the conversations that occurred at Planning Commission and some of the additional input that's come in from the community, the amended, um, and the recommendations that you see here tonight are based on sort of that process and, and that input that occurred from Planning Commission through tonight.
So, so again, just to clarify, you're proceeding with your original application, the R3 on everything? Or are, so I just wanna make sure I understand that because the, um, the conditions that we received were the partial rezoning.
So that's, that is staff's recommendation to Council.
Okay. And so if this is approved, and I'm sorry, I, I have learned so much through this whole process. Um, I have done a lot of research as, um, have other neighbors. And I just, you know, it, it impacts a lot of people, and I'm gonna get emotional.
Okay, let, hold it. Sorry, could you, I'd like to know how you, then I'd like our attorney to respond to...
Okay. I, I just wanna make sure I understand it one-hundred percent. Because if, if you approve something, I wanna make sure that, um...
That's what we're working on, that's why I asked you to, to hold just a minute.
Okay.
And have Cory, our attorney, address some issues.
The question is a good one, and so I think it's worth a clarification. The applications, the applicant's application hasn't changed. But what you're seeing is a staff recommendation that does not, um, recommend approval of the applicant's request. It's partial approval. And I guess this would be a good time so that you know. It's my understanding the applicant consents or agrees with the staff recommendation. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure because that's kinda how we felt after we visited with you, um, August tenth. And then I got up Saturday morning and read this newspaper article. And it's an R3 with four plexes. And then it states right here that neighbors are gonna have access to the indoor pool, the theater, the gym, the tennis courts. And what I'm hearing now is that those are going to be torn down. So along with what Mr. Paxton was saying, the story keeps changing.
We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and start the time because you were pretty much into, to your spiel.
All right, okay. So I, I really appreciated Councilwoman, um, Smith's comment when she says constructive conversation. And I would like to add with one-hundred percent transparency with that. Um, the neighbors and I have wanted this whole entire time to have that kind of communication. And we've made ourselves available. And, um, we have not been taken up on that. Um, we knew that, and I know you knew about the meeting that we had la, the tenth, and, you know, you didn't choose to be there. And I know I have to talk quickly. Anyway, what we have concerns about still is that we have to see everything. Um, it's been stated that the apartments are going to be fifty-five and older. That may not be the case. Um, we were told in our meeting that, um, your intentions are only half of the dorms, fifty-five and older. So what, what I'm trying to make clear is we still don't know the hundred percent plan. We, we, we don't have all of that information. We still, we appreciate, um, the potential developer working with us and conceding on the number of unit dwellings. We still think that eighty-two is too many. Um, I have a diagram that we've worked up. And I couldn't tell if we were working with two-bedroom units or three-bedroom units. The number of additional people in that property could go all the way up to three-hundred-and-thirty-six if a lot of those are, um, you know, three-bedroom. We are not denying that something needs to be done. We all know that. Something needs to be done to that property. We are not opposed to something happening. What we are opposed are, we live there. We're the ones that live there. We're the ones that are gonna be impacted. And what we want is just something that's right for our neighborhood. And, um, the cars that, sorry, I, we've spent so much time on this. Um, we need it to be done correctly. We want it to be done with a hundred percent transparency. That's all we are asking. We want it to be right for everybody. And, um, we know that people need a place to live, but it's a lot of people. It's a lot of people. And we still don't know. One thing missing in the pictures that we got to see, beautiful pictures, where was all of the parking? We didn't get to see the parking. Um, you, Phase One would require seventy parking spaces. Phase Two, seventeen and a half. Phase Three, forty-eight. Or seventy-two, depending upon the number of bedrooms. I mean, we, we, we've done our homework, but we don't understand. Not all of it is making sense. And, um, it, and, and I don't know what else to say. But, um, please, 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 really think about this. And think about, is it right? And do we know the whole story? So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Claflin. Next.
Next is Ron Kirby, 54 Tanner Parkway.
As, as he's coming to the mic, would it be appropriate to clarify what staff is recommending to Council to consider? I don't think that's been clarified maybe adequately.
I think it's spelled out clearly in the table at the end of the staff packet.
Well, I know it's in our packet, but does everybody in the audience have that?
Well, I think Dina also went over the four conditions, but she can go over this again verbally.
Yeah. Or can we pull up, um, can we pull up the PowerPoint? Maybe the, the table and then the final four recommendations?
While we're waiting, the other thing is keep in mind that this is a public hearing. And with all due respect, uh, our medias don't always report accurate information and get that from an accurate source. So just keep that in mind.
Yeah, I was surprised to see that article in the paper as well because everything we've seen was contrary to that article.
But this is a public hearing.
Mr. Kirby, why don't you go right ahead? Just, go ahead.
All right. Well, I don't live in that neighborhood. I do live in Canyon City. But if I did live in that neighborhood, I'd, I have to say, I'd be saying, you know, how soon can you start, for God's sakes?
Could you talk just a little more into the microphone?
Right here?
Yeah, there you go, there you go.
The, the people mentioned about, well, if it's, if everything isn't perfect, we, it'll lower our property values. Well, I, I got news for you. Your property values are already lowered by having an immense derelict property sitting in, in your neighborhood. Uh, my, as an example, my wife, a few months ago, was looking around at different houses, you know, just places that if we ever wanted to move, we might move to. And she looked at a property that was within a couple of blocks of there. And I just told her, I said, you know, I wouldn't even consider buying a house within a couple of blocks of this derelict property, which is a magnet for addicts and vandals. Yeah, unless it was like some sort of a steal, like half-price or better. So if you're worried about your property value lowering, I'll tell you, it's already lowered. 'Cause I'm, I'm a buyer, and other buyers see it the same way. Is that we're not interested as long as that derelict property is there. So, um, I'd have to say almost anything you do with this property besides being a derelict is going to improve the neighborhood. So, that's my point.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby. Now, Dina, would you, these are the staff recommendations, so can you see that? Or do we need to get a printed copy for everybody, or what? We do.
Yep, I'm happy to walk through them again. I mean, just a reminder, these are the exact four recommendations that were in the staff report.
Can you see on the TVs as well? They're on the TVs as well?
Yeah.
Okay, could you follow along?
So the, um, it's important to note that, and clarify, and this isn't, this was the same, um, process when it went to Planning Commission, that the applicant submits an application. The, the applicant asks for A, B, C, D. The city, through that process, staff reviews the application, completes a staff report, and part of the staff report is a recommendation to that body. So first, it was a recommendation to Planning Commission. And so that recommendation back at Planning Commission had conditions on it as well. And that's stated in that particular staff report. So now, this staff report, coming to Council this evening, has the original applicant's asks. I'll just say A, B, C, D. And staff then has done staff's recommendation. So staff's recommendation is basically saying yes, but, but, but. So we're saying yes to R3 on a very specific portion of the site. Um, but also then saying, hey, we listen to the neighbors, and we've been in conversations with the applicant. The applicant is willing to participate. And so, um, maybe it would be easier if we actually, um, go to the next slide, which I skipped over before. So this slide actually shows a line of what we're recommending. So we're recommending that this bottom portion of the site be rezoned to R3. And the top portion of the site remain R2 generally. But that has some conditions on it if we, maybe I can back up. So just to walk through that, so number one is a portion of the site that includes the residence hall and historic school building, which is approximately two-point-six acres, are to be rezoned to R3. A condition of that is that no additional height or addition to the buildings outside of what may be needed for ADA or Egress requirements shall occur on those two existing structures. That's for the R3 portion of the site that we're recommending. Secondly, a portion of the site north of the residence hall and historic school building, approximately four-point-eight acres, is to remain R2 zoning. In addition, we're suggesting that no newly constructed building in R2 shall be taller than thirty-five feet. And the reason that we're recommending that is, um, and I, I walked through what the current height limits are under the existing zoning. And they're actually pretty generous for any residential district. I think it's the R1 rural living in the city has the most restrictive height limit on a building, which is thirty-five feet. Many zoning codes in communities for residential zone districts that allow single-family duplex, um, townhome-type development, a typical maximum height is around thirty-five feet. So that's why we added that extra level of reducing the roof, so to speak, on top of that R2 area. So as an additional condition. So the, the third item that we're conditioning is that the total allowable dwellings shall not exceed eighty-two units. And we've heard that the applicant, um, consents to that. And the fourth thing is that a PUD development plan shall be submitted by the applicant and approve, and approval obtained for the entire site. What that does, it allows us to assure that there's more detailed site planning that occurs. It allows us to look at parking requirements and potentially modify the parking requirements from what the underlying zoning requires. So we could potentially reduce parking requirements for the site. So those are just a couple of, of, um, reasons why we feel that the comprehensive PUD for the entire site should be required.
So there will be comprehensive requirements in the end?
Correct. And it's important to...
Including parking.
Correct. So we would look at parking for the entire site through that PUD process.
How many parking spots do you anticipate being in this project?
We, we haven't calculated that because this is a rezoning process. So a rezoning process does not look at site plan, um, or individual buildings at this, at this point. It's about rezoning. So again, that's the tool, by approving the PUD, that's the tool that provides the teeth to get to the level of detail on several of the questions that, um, um, the residents and neighbors are asking, some of the council members are asking, and quite frankly, some of the questions staff has.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that helpful? Okay.
I've got just a, a real quick technical question. Does it, if we went with the, uh, the partial R3 zoning, does that require a minor subdivision? Or can you have two zones on a single parcel?
Uh, it does not for that, the initial residence hall. So it would be, the, every parcel has a principal structure that can be developed and used by right. So the R3 on a portion of the site, and knowing that the applicant wants to begin with that particular building, that would allow the applicant to continue and, and start with that originally envisioned Phase One.
Oh, I understand that part. Can you have two zones on a single parcel?
You can. There is no requirement that zoning be on a lot-by-lot basis. However, let me answer the second part of your question, which is, um, I think, as to the portion that is not zoned R3, that would require a subdivision exemption to be sold separately. I don't think that subdivision exemption could occur until the PUD was approved for the entire site. So that's, that's part of the protection the city has, that the remainder of the site will develop under a PUD.
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, Jeannie Dayton is the next one. Jeannie, is she still here?
I'd be like to have your address as well, Jeannie.
I'm sorry?
Six oh six Fay.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, six oh six Fay.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I haven't been a community member here that long, but I've had a chance to. I used to live in Denver, Colorado for like twenty years. Um, I've had a chance to see, uh, the PUD, Planned Unit Development, and see its exposure to the community, and it does have an effect. Uh, my question is, um, I've done some research for the Planned Unit Development, and nothing on the slides that we saw mention anything about. Yes, it mentions, uh, affordable housing. Um, but on the amenities, on the development itself, uh, who's actually paying for those? The only thing I saw, it basically, uh, the dorm and the existing historical building are the only things being left. Everything else being taken out. Uh, tennis court is being taken out? It is being taken out.
Yes, it is.
That's amenity for the community itself. The other thing is, my question is, um, most Planned Unit Developments have, uh, HOA added on to their payment, which let, makes it basically the owners or renters actually have to plan more money besides what they're paying out per month. On the average, uh, my research, it was basically another three-hundred-and-ninety-six a month or quarterly or something like that. What is the plan for HOA? Is, is there one?
At this time, no. Uh, but we, when we do it as an HOA, uh, it will probably be in no more than about fifty to sixty bucks a month.
A month?
Yes, ma'am.
On top of?
On top of the rent. Rent or mortgage. What we haven't decided is if the marketplace can't afford a house, housing prices between one-sixty-five and one-seventy-five for the townhome units, then that HOA will come into effect. If not, if it's a rental, then we as the landlord soak that fee up.
Yeah, the other, the other thing on, uh, the HOA, if it does go into effect, which isn't, sounds, isn't, is not even clear yet if there is or isn't. It hasn't planned yet. Um, if so, um, most HOAs basically, um, kind of like the community itself becomes its own community and alleviates the community around. So everybody around, uh, the area basically doesn't have access. Only the people that pay into the HOA. So the surrounding community won't have access. Only those who pay HOA fees. Is that gonna be the fact?
When you say access, what, what do you mean access to?
If you put a pole in there, if you change your mind and put a pole, or you put a tennis court, does the surrounding community, Canyon City community have access to that?
I'm sure we, I'm sure we can add something like a monthly subscription for the community itself.
So the community will pay?
Yeah, if we add those facilities, we can work out something, uh, for the community.
That was my, uh, my question. And as far as the, the zoning and everything, it's gonna be basically, um, I still think this is gonna kinda stick out like a sore thumb as far as the surrounding community. Yes, it's gonna be, benefit the community, but the beauty and the quietness of Canyon City that I have known it to be is gonna be totally different. And that's just my personal opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next one I have is Bridget Myers, 514 Pike.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm going to be specific about what I'm talking about since it seems like we, we tend to be talking about a lot of our same issues. Um, in reference to the PUD and the recommendation of the PUD, um, is there going to be a, a subdivided piece of property for the historic building and the dorm building separately that would have the forty-five percent coverage rule... have the 45% coverage rule go into effect that the city has per lot? Or how does that... how is that going to work? I wanted to bring that up. My understanding is on a PUD that you can take an average lot size of Canyon City of, let's say, 7,000, and you can reduce that down to five or six for the PUD itself, which I'm very concerned about the dense... the dense area of all these homes, these townhomes going in there. And if you reduce... because what I was told by Terry Bernath was that, let's say that my home is on seven... a 7,000-square-foot lot, there is a 45% coverage of that lot that is part of the regulations, city regulations. So, under a PUD, if you take that and you downgrade that lot size to put a townhome on it, where are they going to park? What's it going to look like? What are the view corridors? How dense is it going to be? That's one of the things I wanted to make sure, that if the city is going to go ahead and promote this PUD, which I am very much behind if this is going to proceed, to look at the amount of coverage of the ground. Just because you're going to give him the ability to go up to a certain amount of units does not mean, once you do your mitigation on all your drainage, your parking, and that type of thing, that it should be 82. Maybe it should be 62 units, that's plus the dorm. That's inclusive of everything. I guess the other thing was, my understanding was that there was a 55 and over response from the developer, that you felt that that was... you were amenable to that. But the attorney for the city is saying, "We can't mandate that," among other things that we heard. So, where is that when the PUD is put in place, or when the permit is pulled? How do you put that in place? That's something that, as a collective neighborhood, when we got all the communications from everyone, they wanted to see not only... oh, my time is almost up. They wanted to see not only a variable on the height, but not just two-story, but ranch style, one level, to attain that draw for all the people that are retired or that are choosing that lifestyle where they don't have stairs. And I noticed that the only thing that was shown were two-story townhome units. So, that's something that, as a city, and you know what is needed in the community, and especially this little community in Old Canyon with all the little Victorian homes, whether they're one level, story and a half, there aren't as many two-story, please keep that in mind and consider that.
Thank you.
So, I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Next one I have is Clyde Lake. 601 Floral, is that right?
I've lived here for quite a while, and I have a property at 601 Floral. Nobody's ever contacted me about this except the neighborhood group. You're talking about years of disruption here, and I'd like nothing better than to see some nice units go in across the street from my property there on 601 Floral. But I've seen projects like this go south. It's interesting to me that all the people that have spoken in favor of this project don't live in the neighborhood. And so, I'm not against it, but Mr. Butler, I'd like to know how many projects of this scale you've done.
Well, sir, it's not every day that you get to buy a college.
I'm asking you, how many projects of this scale have you done? That's my answer to my question.
I've done at least three of them, sir.
Well, where are they located? Could you...
Two in Texas, one in Colorado Springs.
Could you give us information about where those are? Are you talking about mobile home parks?
Yes, sir, I am.
Oh, so you've had experience with mobile home parks?
Okay, we're getting a little argumentative here. Okay, you should be addressing us, really.
I'm just trying to clarify, is it you have a project, a building project on this schedule, a development project on this schedule?
Like I said, sir, it's not every day you get to buy a college.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I see projects like this go south.
Mr. Lake, you need to be addressing us.
And it's a disaster. And we're talking about years of disruption for this community. Now, I'm not trying to be rude or anything, I'm just trying to get the facts. Who's doing your financing?
Mr. Lake, you're supposed to be addressing City Council, not the applicant. So, address your comments to City Council.
Okay, okay, who's doing Mr. Butler's financing, City Council?
We can't consider...
What we're discussing here, we're discussing a zone change. We're not discussing anything else.
I just see that there's issues that, as a businessman, I'm concerned about, because I've seen projects like these stagnate, I've seen half-built buildings, and it can become a disaster. So, as a property owner, this is very important to me. I'm not... I'm not trying to attack Mr. Butler or anybody here on the City Council. I'm not trying to be combative. These are really important questions. And I think we, as property owners here, deserve answers, because this is going to significantly disrupt our lives for years to come. And I'd love to have a great project go across the street from my property and increase my property value and uplift the neighborhood. I really want this. I'm not against Mr. Butler. I'm just trying to find out some facts here. Is that a problem?
Well, one thing you need to realize, sir, when you go to buy a home and all that, nobody's going to question you with regards to where are you getting your money from, okay? That's between you and the builder, okay? So, that's one of the things, when you're looking at, where's his money coming? You know, that's really his concern, to have the money available to complete this project. You know, and just like when you want to buy a home, it's up to you and the lender to make sure you have the finances to build that home. That's between you and the lender.
Right, but with all due respect, when I go to buy a home, I'm not trying to rezon the whole neighborhood.
Well, but you're still... but you're talking finances, okay? That's a specific question that you ask.
But financing...
And that's what I'm answering your specific question for.
Okay, okay. Well, I just... now, I just encourage the City Council to make sure financing is in line, because I have seen these things fall apart because of financing. So, these are just concerns that I have, because it will affect me financially, and I'm not trying to be combative, but I just asking questions.
Okay.
And I hope I can get some answers to those from you guys.
Thank you.
Next one we have is Matthew Mueller.
Yes, I'm Matthew Mueller. I do live at 627 Dalmatian Drive now, but I lived on Ninth and Floral for 22 years. I'm a life resident of Canyon City. My sister went to St. Scholastica Academy. My daughter went to St. Scholastica Academy. And, you know, I'd love nothing more than to have the academy back and, you know, the sisters and the late Mr. Fith, who took care of the grounds and magnificent piece of property, and it was a great school. Not a college, but it seems like a college campus, but anyhow, you know? What we have now is a train wreck. You have a huge piece of property that is a disaster area. Nobody interested in doing anything with it until now. Now, if my neighbors buys a property next to me, I don't have any control about what that neighbor does. They may do a bunch of stuff I don't like at all, but I don't have any say in that. The people of this neighbor... in the neighborhood now, I sympathize with you, but you have more input right now than you would ever have with anybody buying the house next to you. So, you got a gentleman willing to come in here, transform this piece of junk of a property that you got right now, and do something with it? You know, if we can't approve this gentleman coming in and wanting to do something with this property, yes, you're going to have more units, you're going to have some traffic, but there's a lot of high-density units in Canyon City, all the older home facilities, the two-story jam-packed full of apartments. And, you know, they're not a problem. You might have a little more traffic in the neighborhood, that's not a problem. What's a problem is a wonderful piece of property going to waste. And if we can't approve this in this community, I think we send a direct message out here that Canyon City isn't interested in development. Stay away.
Thank you. Next.
That's all I have that's been turned into me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, we've covered the comments. Any more comments from City Council, or Mr. Meisner?
Just a question for illustrious city attorney. We don't have, I'm going to call it the authority to impact or to question these financing things in a zoning, do we?
That's correct. This is a rezoning application only. If and when this were to be approved, and at the time when public infrastructure was going to be constructed, it's at that point where the applicant has to provide security, and that's when you understand if they're able to do the project.
Mr. Gill.
So, to be clear, what we're interested in tonight is to rezone this one section of property to an R3, the other one remains at R2, to allow the developer to put a plan together to come before City Council and Planning Commission first to... for the entire plan. So, all we're doing right now is we're approving the zone change, and will that zone change stay in effect if this developer decides to take his game other places?
Yes, that is the staff's recommendation. So, the staff's recommendation is R3 for the smaller portion.
Right.
The larger portion remains in its current zoning.
Correct.
And the only way for the remainder of the site to be developed, other than the R3, is for a PUD to be done for the entire site.
Correct, and that takes a whole bunch more, whole bunch of levels of approval and public hearings and everything else, once again.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any more?
I have a question for Mr. Butler. How much is the cost for asbestos removal in the dormitories estimated to cost you?
We've got bids between 600 and 800,000.
And how much is the entire project?
For which portion?
For the entire development. Do you have an estimated...
All three phases?
All three phases.
Yeah, it's about 8 million.
About 8 million dollars. So, we had a lady come in here earlier, you know, worried that with the Arkansas River Quarter Plan, that, you know, we were going to be buying all these properties and changing things that were going to happen in town. We don't even have money to take care of St. Scholastica. If we could have taken St. Scholastica as a city, you know, years ago, that would have been fantastic to help that, but even the 8 million dollar cost, taxpayer money, I don't know if we can do that. We have to work with private developers to meet the community's needs, and that includes finding affordable housing for our residents. Someone had mentioned a concern about HUD. This is not a HUD development.
It is not.
It is not. Okay.
And council member, I'd like to add one thing here. You know, I've been in this community for about two years now, and I've owned property in this community for two... a little bit over two years, and what I see is older population, and so, a lot of the younger people that take care of the older population have to drive from Pablo and outer areas, because they can't afford to live here. And so, what that's going to do in the next 10, 15 years is going to actually drive the cost of taking care of the seniors way up. So, something's going to have to give at some point, because you need affordable housing here so that they can live and take care. The tourism industry, you need them to take care of the elderly, so you need that influx of new people here. And what I hear is everybody say, "Yeah, we know we need that, but just not here." And so, these people don't have cars and a lot of access to transportation. When you're making eight to 10 bucks an hour, every dollar counts.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to cut it off. We're going to close the public hearing and go on to 12B, which is ordinance number 29, series 2017. I will need three council people to introduce, Mr. Schumacher, Mr. Hockes, Mr. Gill. Clerk, would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number 29, series of 2017, and ordinance rezoning certain real property within the city of Canyon City, Colorado, 615 Pike Avenue.
Thank you. Got a motion and second from council? Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve ordinance 29, series of 2017 on first reading.
Second.
Second, any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, just one comment. In item two of the conditions, and I mean, this is subject to, I guess, interpretation. In Mr. Butler's presentation, I think we talked about two and... one- and two-bedroom Adina earlier had talked about these different homes having one, one and a half, two, two and a half stories. These homes you're talking about are the townhomes, two-story?
Yes, sir, two stories. No more than two stories.
Would you be offended if we... or would it be acceptable to include in number two something to the effect of no taller than 35 feet or exceed two stories?
Yes, sir. I'm okay with that.
Then I would... I think that might make some people in the neighborhood a little more comfortable. 35 feet is certainly tall enough to make a three-story building.
Yes, sir, it is.
You're talking about item number two?
In the ordinance, item number two...
It's already in there.
No, it says 35 feet.
Just 35 feet.
Not to exceed two...
In the ordinance itself, condition number two under section one just says 35 feet in height, and so, I think what the recommendation is, is 35 feet in height or exceed two stories. So, it's both.
Not to exceed, I believe, is what you're saying.
Yes, not to exceed 35 feet in height or two stories.
Right.
I...
You need to amend the original motion.
I know. Okay, then, we could have done this first if I'd been quick enough, but so, Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make the motion to amend item two of the proposed ordinance to add the clause or exceed two stories, or some wording that...
I think the language would... I'll read the entire sentence with your proposed revision. "No newly constructed building in R2 shall be taller than 35 feet in height, nor shall it be allowed to exceed two stories."
That would be the language I would recommend in my motion.
I second that.
Okay, we'll need a motion to amend the...
I just did.
You got it?
I second his amendment.
Okay, now, we'll call the roll on that change of that wording, just on that. Okay, call the roll.
Councilmember Wade.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Now, we need to approve it as amended.
We need to go ahead... do we need a new motion, or just approve it as amended?
The motion to approve it as amended.
We will need a new motion.
New motion as amended.
For approval of the amendment as amended. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Mr. Schumacher, please, help me here.
I made a motion to amend the motion.
To approve the...
To approve the motion as amended.
The ordinance as amended.
The ordinance as amended, number 29, series of 217.
Here, second. Gill, second. Any discussion on that motion? Are we clear?
I'll repeat it. The original motion was to amend the ordinance. Now, this is to approve the ordinance as amended.
I made a motion before that.
It went away on the... because it was amended. That's what he amended. He amended your original motion.
Roberts, okay.
Okay. Roll call.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hacquez.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, we're moving into numerous liquor things here. Okay, number 13. Public hearing, application for a special event liquor permit, Fremont Adventure Recreation, September 22nd and 23rd, Macon Plaza slash Cara, Carr Square and 5th Street. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Could I have a report from the city clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Ashley Sack, who is representing the Farr group, who has applied to this council for a special event liquor permit for Friday and Saturday, September 22nd and 23rd, for their Bikes and Brews Festival. Notice that the public hearing was given by posting the location in the park. This is the fifth liquor license event that this organization has conducted, from which there have been no resulting concerns. They have extended this event to include Friday to offer beverages, sandwiches, snacks during the registration within the Fremont Center for the Arts Building. On Saturday, between 11:00 and 4:00 in the following, the bike reg, cyclists will be offered lunch and a Colorado brew of beer and enjoy live music. Alcohol sales for this event is being conducted as a fundraiser for the organization to continue their efforts to promote outdoor recreational in Fremont County. Individuals 21 and up will receive a wristband indicating legal drinking age. Participating brewers, who will be serving their own product, will be advised on the protocol at inspection time. Volunteers from this organization have attended the training provided by the city and will be checking IDs to ensure legal drinking age, and they will also assist with, uh, patrolling the perimeter. An onsite inspection for the premises will be conducted each day, and once all requirements have been fulfilled, the permit will be issued. Upon review of the application, suspended, determined that the fee, appropriate fees have been submitted, the diagram meets the requirements, the applicant has applied for and obtained a park use permit and street closure permit, and has received permission from the Fremont Center for the Arts, and the organization is in good standing with the Secretary of State. So, with that, I'd open it to, to any questions you may have of the applicant.
Mr. Weed.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Ashley.
Hello, Councilman Weed.
Thanks for sitting through that. Um, okay, I'm sure you're familiar with these questions, but we need to ask them. So, are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes, sir.
Is there a copy of the Liquor Code on file with your organization?
Yes, sir.
How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
35 volunteers.
And how are they gonna be trained on the Liquor Code?
They'll be TIPS-trained.
Okay, perfect. And are you fully aware that you are responsible for client, compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code, and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization, as well as future licensing?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to tell us a little more about your event?
I would love to.
I'd love to hear it.
Thank you for having me. So, Bikes and Brews, we are in our fifth year this year. As Kathy mentioned, we have expanded the hours a little bit more to accommodate not only the riders, who will be participating in either a century ride, which is 100 miles, a metric century, which is 100K, or the Red Canyon 50K, which is about 35 miles. Those riders will come back to Macon Plaza, where hopefully, we will also welcome members of the community, who would like to attend the festival afterward. That includes live music. We have Odell Brewing Company, Company coming to, um, Pour Beers with us. The Fremont Center for the Arts, this is the first year that we are partnering with them. We're very excited about that partnership, opening up the Fremont Center for the Arts the day of the, um, festival and the bike rides, to allow people to come in and see a fantastic art show that we're putting together, so we hope everybody will come for free. It is absolutely free to participate in the festival afterward. Of course, there is a small fee associated with the, um, ride itself, if you'd like to do the bike ride. But we're excited about the partnership with the FCA. We're excited to, um, jump into our fifth year of this event. We try every year to ask for feedback from both the riders and the community, and we got some great feedback last year, hence the extended hours. We partner with the, um, Quality Inn down at the other end of town. We also partner with the Abbey at, excuse me, the App, the Winery at Holy Cross Abbey, um, and we offer our registrants a, um, kind of a BOGO buy-one-get-one free discount for admission and free tasting over at that Harvest Festival, so we really feel like this is a community-centered event. We do, um, attract a lot of outside participants from the Colorado Springs, Denver, Front Range area, but of course, as I said, it's free to come to the, um, post-ride festival, so we're excited about the partnerships. We're excited to, um, welcome local and outside riders and hope to have a fantastic event. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Any comments from the audience at this time? Any other comments from Council?
Um, Mr. Mayor, um, Ashley, I'd just like to thank you for your organization and putting on such a fabulous event, and only that, for embracing our Fremont Center of the Arts. I think that's a fantastic partnership, and I'm really excited about that as well.
Mr. Meisner?
Thanks for doing this, Ashley. My additional question, as always, is what procedures do you have in place to make for sure that you're not over-serving?
Over-serving, well, of course, we have moved the time, um, so in previous years, it had, it's gone, um, late into the evening. The time now is during the afternoon. Obviously, all of our servers are trained, um, and we will not serve if there are any behaviors or, um, uh, issues related to being over-served. That's it.
Thank you.
Let's be polite.
Sounds good. I'm gonna close the public hearing then, and we'll ask for a motion and a second.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of council. I make motion to approve the application for a special event liquor permit for Fremont Adventure Recreation, September 22nd and 23rd.
Second, Mr. Schuck, a second? Any discussion on that motion? No? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hacquez.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, moving right along. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ashley. Uh, number 14 is a public hearing again, application for a special event liquor permit for Fremont Community Foundation, September the 9th, in Veterans Park. I'm gonna open up the public hearing, get this time, and a report from the city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Dan Brown, who's representing the Fremont Community Foundation, who's applied to this council for a special event liquor permit for September 9th in Veterans Park for their annual toy run. Notice that this public hearing was given by posting the premises in the park. Like the years past, this event requires bike participants to bring a toy to enter the, to enter the run. All toys will be given to the Department of Human Services, to be distributed at the Christmas to underprivileged kids in Fremont County. The event will also include bands, a motorcycle rodeo, and other games the public can participate in. Food will be offered from, uh, area restaurants. Is that still true, Dan?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know that one for sure. Individuals aged 21 and up will receive a wristband, and the underage participants will receive a black X. Volunteers from this organization will be checking IDs to ensure legal drinking age, and will assess and, assist in patrolling the perimeter. Many of the volunteers have attended training offered by the city. An onsite inspection of the premises will be conducted the day of the event, and once all requirements have been met, the permit would be issued. Upon review of the application, the appropriate fees have been submitted, the diagram meets the filing requirements, they've obtained a park use permit, and the corporation is in good standing with the Secretary of State. So, with that, I open it up to any questions you may have.
Any questions of the applicant?
Welcome, Dan.
Hi, Jim. I've only seen three of you guys yawn so far, so I'll go as quickly as I can.
Just remember, you're up in the hot seat there.
It's exciting.
Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes.
Is there a copy of the Liquor Code on file with your organization?
There is.
How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
We'll have, we'll have 10 to 12 for this event.
How will they be trained on the Liquor Code and Liquor Code laws?
They have been trained through the TIPS courses done by the city. Over the last numerous years, we've been doing these events.
Are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code, and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization, as well as future licensing?
Yes.
Uh, any specific things that you're gonna do to ensure there's no serving, over-serving of participants?
Sure, we're just gonna follow the rules that we learned in the TIPS class, and that should cover almost everything that we have going. This is a much more, this is a mature event, how's that?
Thank you.
Motorcycle riders, uh, not too many kids will be around.
All right, uh, take some time here to explain what's going on.
I'll do it pretty quick. Kathy did a pretty good job, but, uh, this started in 2002 as the Eddie Osala Toy Run, and then it evolved into a John Wells Toy Run, and this year, still John Wells, uh, we're throwing a little extra in it with Sally Dornhecker. It's been kind of a tough year on, a whole bunch of us in Canyon City, we've lost some really good people. So, uh, Sally's husband, Marv, is spearheading this event for us, and, uh, we're naming the ride after Sally, and it'll start, uh, here, we'll go up over the skyline, the back way, we'll run up to, uh, the gorge, into Guffey, come back here and do a couple stops, stops, we will stop at, uh, Whitewater Bar and Grill, go to Florence, and we'll end up back in the park. And we will have a band playing when we get back in the park. This thing will be done by 7 o'clock at night.
Thank you.
And this will be at Centennial?
Veterans Park.
Excuse me, Veterans Park.
Veterans Park.
Yeah.
Okay.
Band show.
Got it. Any other comments? Any comments from the audience? I'm gonna go close the public hearing.
Can I ask you one question?
I'm sorry, I'm, yes, you're right.
Explain the, um, motorcycle rodeo.
Motorcycle rodeo, if you've never seen one, it's pretty interesting. They do things called a weenie bite, where there'll be a hot dog hanging from a stick, and you have to go very slow with the passenger on the back, and they have to be able to pull that hot dog off the motorcycle, and the hot dogs are probably covered with mustard or something. Uh, so, it's, it's very, uh, some big skill levels you have to have on some of these motorcycle events. Uh, slow ride, if you've never seen a slow ride, is probably the most, uh, interesting event ever. It's whoever finishes the cross that goes over the, the finish line last. Really, really an impressive thing. If you've never ridden a motorcycle, or even if you've had, you have, you see how hard it is to go slow. Yeah.
Thank you.
Wow. Thank you. Any more comments? Let's close the public hearing, ask for a motion and a second. Mr. Meisner?
Uh, Mayor and Council, I move that we approve the application for a special event liquor permit for Fremont Community Foundation for September 9th, Veterans Park, for their annual toy run.
Second.
Mr. Weed, second. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Hacquez.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, number 15 is a public hearing, application for a new art gallery liquor permit, Random Expression Movement at 710 Main Street. I'm gonna open the public hearing at this time. Report from the city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Mary Shell, the owner, who is of R.E.M., who's applied to this council for a art gallery permit. Notice that the public hearing was given by posting the premises at 710 Main Street. An art gallery permit permits a business whose primary permit, purpose is to exhibit and show fine works of art to serve complimentary alcohol beverages to their customers, not more than 15 times per year in a 12-month period. The dates targeted for the alcohol service must be declared within initial application, and the permitted entity must make any changes to those dates in writing, not less than 15 days prior to the change taking place. Service is limited to not more than four hours per day or event. The same major rules apply to an art gallery permit, as with other liquor licenses, in that service may not be made to an underage or visibly intoxicated person. Alcohol to be served must be complimentary, and no fee may be charged for entry into any event. There are a few other rules pertaining to an art gallery permit, which I have included in exhibit, exhibit, in your packet, uh, not much other than what I've just said. The applicant is aware that of the limitations set forth under this form of permit, including the dates and times of limitation upon which alcohol may be served, and the requirements to ensure that no underage or intoxicated person will be served at these events. Michelle and representatives from the establishment will be required to attend the liquor training that will be hosted in, by the city this September. An onsite inspection of the premises will be conducted, and once all requirements of the inspection have been fulfilled, the permit would be issued. Upon review of the application, the appropriate fees have been submitted, the diagram meets filing requirements, and the applicant maintains possession of the premises through release. So, with that, if you have any questions of the applicant or myself, I'd be open to any of them.
Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Michelle, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
It's, um, are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Uh, as far as the first right, uh, um, the gallery part, yes.
Okay, and you have a copper, a copy of the Liquor Code on file at your establishment?
Yes.
Okay. How many employees do you expect to have?
Uh, three, well, we're mostly volunteers, artists. I have one employee, and we'll probably have three staff.
Okay, and, uh, I'm going to guess that they will be involved in serving liquor, and?
Yes.
So, how will they be trained?
Um, basically, I didn't know there was any kind of a training for, um, art receptions. They basically just will have, we have little cups, and they get a cup of wine.
Yeah.
And that's, it's not a really.
September, I think it's September 28th, I'm not, don't quote me, and people in the public, don't quote me, it's Sep, the end of September, I think it's 28th, 29th, maybe.
So, we'd have to have somebody on training for that?
You would have to be required to come to that.
Me or whoever's, would be the person serving?
I would require you, number one, and number two, and an employee.
Yeah.
And where would that be?
Here.
Oh, great, okay. And September?
You will get an invite.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, it's an excellent opportunity to get the training you need, so that you can be sure that you will comply with the Colorado Liquor Code, and that's really important, and I'm gonna get to that in just a moment. But, um, in your application, you did not submit a petition. Have you spoken to any of the adjoining business owners or people in the city about this?
No. I mean, um, they know that we were getting it, and they thought it was exciting, so they can come in and have a glass of wine on First Friday.
Yeah.
That's all I'm using for, is for First Friday Outwalk.
There's no requirement for a petition, so, uh, I was just curious if you had sought any input from your neighbors, and it sounds like you have. Okay, and the final one, this is what I was ref, getting reference to earlier, are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code, and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your business, and result in suspension and/or revocation of your liquor license, and I will add to that, and cost you money?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, would you like to tell us anything more about, uh, your, uh, enterprise, we'll call it?
Uh, well, we have, uh, we need more art galleries in Canyon City, that's for sure. So, um, I just wanted to go ahead and open one up that has more, less established artists and more upcoming artists, will give all the new artists in, in the neighborhood a chance to show their artwork and sell it and feel good about themselves.
Okay, and, uh, I'm just gonna take this opportunity to preempt Councilman Meisner And I'm just going to take this opportunity to preempt, Councilman Meisner here, and ask his question, and you may not know the answer to it, but hopefully, after you complete the training, you will. But, what steps will you take to make sure that the people who attend your events are not over-served alcoholic beverages?
I'll have a very big guy at the door.
Oh, that's a good answer.
With a cork for the bomb. We're really conscious of that. I don't want anybody drinking and driving or, you know, at late, and it's a very small group that, and they're usually people that we know that are in there. And instead of, we're serving in such a small area, we'll be able to keep an eye on everybody. Of course, there's always the strange one that walks in already drunk, you know, off the streets, but we have people that are watching for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that is a possibility.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Shell. Any other comments from the audience? Any comments from the audience? City council? Mr. Meisner?
I just have a, I'm going to say a comment or a question. You'd indicated that you were not familiar with Colorado Liquor Code, but that you were familiar with the section on art gallery. Just keep in mind, you need to be knowledgeable of that full Colorado Liquor Code.
Exactly. And I'll be going to the training in September.
And then, I've just got concerns about approving a liquor code for people that have no training.
Before she gets a license, I usually will go over a brief training with them at the time of the inspection, at least with the owner, to let them know, a very brief, condensed version of the Liquor Code. I don't foresee this person here, this opportunity here, that they're going to have that many people coming in for, so to speak, getting drunk. It's more of a social hour. I don't foresee, when I talk to Ms. Shell, that she, these are complimentary drinks. I don't think it's going to behoove her to over-serve, since it's going to be a cost to her overhead. So, I don't see, when I talk to her, that over-service is going to be an issue, maybe some underage kids may try coming in there, but I think having an art gallery, she pretty much probably already knows her clientele that's coming in there.
Exactly.
Do we not normally require that of liquor licenses to be trained?
We usually require them. However, since we have it one or two times a year, sometimes even a new restaurant will not have that training until we have a session. And your, your code and your requirements here require them to obtain training as soon as possible. I did have a gentleman in the audience that opened up the Cajun Place. They did not have, per se, go to training before they opened up, but they, you and this council requires training as, as we see fit. We've got to get the state down here, and it's a state-issued type of training. If you were going to hold, hold these guys, hold everybody up, you'd be holding a lot of restaurant owners up, probably.
Do we have any liability there?
No, just the opposite. Because liquor's a matter of statewide concern, your policy of getting people trained is a good one, but ultimately, you can't deny a license for not obtaining, a new license for not obtaining training.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from council? I'm going to close the public hearing and go on for a motion in a second. Mr. Weed?
Thinking, Mayor, members of council, I make motion to approve the application for a new art gallery liquor permit for R E M at 710 Main Street.
Second.
Mr. Schumacher. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing and seeing none, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Mary, I'll need you to come in probably tomorrow sometime. I noticed you didn't sign the application, so we need to get your signature.
I'll be in.
Thank you.
What time, what time you want me in?
I don't, whichever, any time's fine. I'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 16 is Resolution Number 20 of 2017, a finding petition for annexation in substantial compliance, Great Western Storage LLC Annexation. Could we have a report from the city attorney, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is an annexation which is what we refer to as a matter of statewide concern. What that means is that the rules related to annexation are dictated by the state. The city has a couple of extra requirements, but we're not there yet. Once you receive a petition for annexation, if it is found to be in substantial compliance, the council action is to set it for a hearing not less than 30, nor more than 60 days from tonight's meeting. So, what you have in front of you is a resolution that would find substantial compliance and set the hearing date for October 2nd, 2017.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I'll ask the obvious question. In your opinion, is this parcel in substantial compliance?
It is, and the resolution so finds, but it is.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? If not, could I have a motion in a second from council?
Mr. Mayor? I move, I move that we approve Resolution Number 20, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing and seeing none, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote. Don, I can't even talk to him.
Okay, thank you. 17A is a public hearing of a zone code amendment, Title 17, Wireless Service Facilities. I'm going to open the public hearing at this time and have a report from the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a proposed ordinance that addresses, frankly, a number of interrelated issues. I was actually going to jump in when you were talking earlier about the right-of-way excavation ordinance, because some of the requirements in that ordinance are equally applicable to this ordinance, because this ordinance is subject to, if you adopt it, the police powers of the city, including permitting requirements in your streets. There are both federal and state law that frankly seek to restrict your ability to regulate wireless service facilities and the location of their facilities in your right-of-way. What this ordinance seeks to do is maximize the city's ability to regulate within those constraints. Unfortunately, both at the federal level and the state level, legislators have done a lot to restrict that authority. So, what we attempted to do with this ordinance, and I'm happy to answer specific questions, is give you the maximum authority without violating either state or federal law.
Any questions of council?
About this?
About this?
I just got.
You have three minutes. No, I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
Well, on pages six and seven.
Push the button.
You make reference to facility. I, I don't know if this is attorney or Dina's. I don't know who answers these, but on page six, you make reference to facility, but even, in definitions, I don't see any definition for what a facility is, which I suggest, I guess it's, I don't know, is it a building?
Perhaps. We're on page six. I'm looking at.
Well, if you start on page six of the redlined ordinance.
Yes.
Item one, facility?
In that context, it is a W S F, in this case, a freestanding W S F.
Yeah, but what's a facility?
A wireless service facility.
Yeah, but they talk about antennae, and then they talk about equipment, and they talk about accessory equipment. Is that all of that?
Yes, because it is the facility as a whole to be compatible, absolutely.
Yeah, but when you take that terminology and then say it will not exceed beyond the highest point of the roof, going to page seven, that seems to suggest that there would have been some other verbiage there where that would have been more appropriately used.
If you would prefer that each place of the facility be substituted with W S F, we can do that, but certainly, again, when you look at the sec, the next section, 17.45.050, the facility, it refers at that point within context to the wall-mounted wireless service facility.
Okay, but it says on page seven, item B2, that the facility shall be screened from view and colored to match the building.
Correct. Again, the building or roof-mounted W S F in the context of that section.
I guess a general question to Dina is, we talked about box containers or shipping containers. A lot of those facilities that I'm familiar with, equipment portion of those facilities resemble box containers? Because they're a unit that's brought in, does, is that a potential conflict with some other things that we're talking about? Where we're restricting the use of box containers?
No, I think those were meant to be.
Or storage containers?
Yeah, I mean, presumed the larger, traditional-sized storage container versus just the kind of utility accessory to an antenna. That would be separate.
I believe also the, the box containers in residential, if I'm not mistaken, the connect boxes or whatever.
Yeah, I thought it was citywide.
Well, aren't you only trying to regulate what's in city property? The rest on private property is a different thing altogether. And there's two kinds of antennas. There's the big ones that stick up, but also the kind that can be stood on the side of the building or on the side of a pole.
Right.
And that's what he's talking about here. Those things, as I read it, can't exceed, can't be sticking way up there above the roof. It could be mounted on the side and in compliance with, or appearance-wise with the structures around it, as compared to a large antenna that would stick up, dressed up like an evergreen tree. And they have those.
Well, and I guess I would say this. This is not, by definition, intended to and does not capture the dish, network dish on someone's house. This is a specific type of wireless service facility that is part of a network that is regulated or can be regulated by the city, subject to the FCC and federal regulations and the state law.
It would be a facility for profit, in other words.
Yeah, the, the one distinction is certainly, this, this applies to wireless service facilities located on private property, not only on public property. So, if someone, for example, buys property and erects a facility, this ordinance applies.
Okay. I was wrong. Yes.
So, my, my neighbor couldn't put a big 60-foot tower.
Not without seeking approval, and it would not meet the setbacks based on what you're describing under this ordinance.
Okay. That's what I understood this. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Meisner?
Where did the 400 square feet come from? Is that some federal guideline, or is that something we decided?
On what page do you want?
It's made reference on page seven.
C.
C? And I, and I'm assuming that there was another reference to it, to.
Yeah, on page six, four.
Which I assume you're talking about, even though it says storied shelters, all of that combination of stuff cannot exceed 400 square feet.
And one of the things that we do when you're trying to put together limitations on this is find a number that does not have the effect of excluding those facilities from the city, because that, then we would be running afoul of federal law. And so, yeah, this is consistent with other ordinances that have been upheld for limiting the size.
Yes, Mr. Meisner?
And then, on the staff recommendation, there was a imposed distance requirement they were suggesting with Highway 50 and Highway 115, that was contingent upon, you giving us an explanation. Is that because of federal guidelines?
It is, and in fact, under state law, this is actually under state law, House Bill 1193 specifically says you have to keep public highways of the state open for these.
Okay.
And so, that, that is the reason, we cannot recommend that.
One last question. Page nine, where it says that if we don't approve it within 60 days, it becomes approved? Is that normal?
Only for wireless service facilities and only under federal law. It is what is known as a shot clock requirement, and it is something that unfortunately, the wireless service facility providers under state law have been successful in getting that requirement put in federal law.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any comments from the audience? My goodness, we've lost our audience. Apparently, wireless service facilities.
I think we wore them all down.